All right, I'm glad to see that you've enjoyed it and hopefully entertaining them maybe.
Yeah.
All of it.
I just did. Perfect.
So, what's going on up here? Aaron, that's Swindle, how you doing, sir? But yeah, I appreciate it. We'll try to make it a good source.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea.
I could say.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess. Yeah.
But you know, when I started here, they were okay.
Right.
They've been carrying their names all day. Just called out, they don't take the first one.
I'm sorry.
That's all of them.
Yeah, unfortunately, like I love to, you know, I've become cuter where after having scared with my mother-in-law too. And she's trying to die. I'll be there. She's doing relatively well, but she should have been out. She had one scare where she had to go back to the hospital. She's sixty-eight. Yeah. Yeah. It was maybe, but she's had some issues, but we were, she had an heart attack. That's why we're trying to get her. So I appreciate that. I do, so. Yeah.
Good evening, my pleasure. In part thirteen, they sent out the people who had to move to the block. I'd like to find a way to drive us in, one of the public access places.
Certainly, Ms. Mathias.
President.
Ms. Pennell.
President.
Mr. Seward. Ms. Estes. Mr. DiJack.
Present.
Mayor Jackson.
Present. And some questions.
Certainly, Ms. Raleigh. Mr. Swindle. Mr. Shiplin is absent and Mr. Burnett is absent. But we have a forum.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening. We ask your guidance back to us. We pray for compassion, strength, and wisdom to guide world leaders. We ask to provide comfort to those around the world who are suffering in so many ways. Economic issues, disease, war, weather, family breakdowns, lots many more. We ask for your protection for our first responders, men and women of the military, those abroad across the United States. We pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
This evening's public hearing is to hear public comments regarding proposed amendments to the subdivision of zoning ordinance related to sidewalks, driveways, and so on. Thinkers are asked to be directly in council and. Have no comments on that. The town please join public hearing and take note to, you know, planning commission meetings are free to go as of time. Thank you very much.
Wow, all right.
Thank you guys so much. See you on Thursday.
Lauren, thank you. All right, okay, Aaron.
I need a motion to approve the amendment to joint public hearing and the Bridge Town Council meeting voted for thirteen twenty twenty-three in the budget board session on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. That was said. That's what I'm saying. And Seward, are there any additional adjustments? Call call please.
Hi, Ms. Pennell. Mr. Seward.
Aye.
Ms. Mathias.
Aye.
Ms. Estes. Mr. DiJack.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye. We have no action items.
I'm fine, I'm fine. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me here this evening. On January, in January of twenty twenty-three, those of us who have post office boxes at our post office were informed of a rate increase from thirty-eight dollars for six months to a hundred and five dollars for six months. That's a pretty big jump, see the mouth going. And so I said, oh, good, I'll just go ahead and get my box that I've put off to outside. Well, there are a few challenges to getting a box in front of your house. I live at two thirty High Street. And most of you probably know where which one High Street is and it has sidewalk on both sides all the way up except the very last little bit when you get the bowman on the left if you're going north. So I found out the mailbox cannot be mounted on sidewalk because of the issues of accessibility for the American Disabilities Act and so forth. Now, almost every mailbox down there is on sidewalk, but apparently they don't want anymore. The second thing was I thought, okay, well, maybe I can put a mailbox on the house. Well, I've never really seen any here and there's always the guy in the truck driving around. No, you can't put the mailbox, well, you can put it up there, they won't use it because Dayton is considered rural delivery. I had no idea. And rural delivery requires driver lift of your mail into your mailbox. See, a few of you nodding, I've never heard of these rules, so this is all new to me. Sidewalks on High Street are on both sides, which is a little bit unusual in Dayton, I'm finding, now that I kind of noticed it. And the curb with that sidewalk is right next to the walk, so there's no grassy strip or space of any kind between sidewalk and the curb. And my sidewalk is sixty-four inches wide, including. So I don't think any of our mailmen have an arm that long to reach from the truck to the mailbox that were planted in my yard. So not on the sidewalk, not on the house, and no grass. And yet, almost all the boxes on High Street are in the cement of the sidewalk. And I mean, I'm sure some of those have been there decades. So, anyway. I don't know what the reasons are for the increase in that much increase in it, but I really don't exactly. Because I accept. In the post office, but I don't have, seem to have an alternative. So in speaking with Krista, you suggested I just simply mention this issue here with you all today. And that's an idea, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Anything is certainly welcome to.
That's great.
Good evening, Deb Frank, three sixty-three College Street here in Dayton. Wanted to update you all about the merchants and some things going on. The merchants are excited for our spring event. First is the March twenty-fourth, Meet the Artist from five to eight. Hope all of you would at least come down and visit with us, meet the artist. I do have an update for our flyer and Maggie has been helping us immensely in getting that postage. She's going to work with the woodman, so kudos to Maggie for helping us with that. We saw that the wayfinding signage is moving along with bids, yay, because I think we've all been anxiously waiting that. Um, one thing I'd like to mention is the merchant group, ever since I got involved, the one rule we had that we were going to be moving forward, we don't look back, we don't want to waste our time. When I met with Bob, I told him that too. I was very specific. We're not going to talk about the past, and he kind of brought it and kept stood fast, and I said, no, Bob, I want to spend my time with you on very productive things that the merchants would like to have. And so, and we appreciate that across all parties. There are no bull's eyes, either figuratively or literally, on anyone in this room, outside of this room. We want to work coherently on everything that we do. And so on our radar currently is individual signage. And I would like to correct my comments from last month because Cheryl did bring up, and I wasn't aware, I thought it still said Silver Lake Mill, but thank you Cheryl for, you know, let me. Because actually, it opens it up even better for the merchants to have individual flyers or flags there that would be approved with Krista's help. Um, so if we're advertising for Silver Lake on the blacksmith shop, Silver Lake's owned by Harrisonburg, not owned by Dayton. So I'm thinking if we do that for Silver Lake, which is not owned by us, what would be the issue with allowing appropriate signage, not permanent? That would either be for our historical downtown or, say, for instance, Valley Structure or Sunrise Daily. Just a thought about that. Um, the other thing that's come up, and we're not going shade on anyone on the town crew about our flower beds. I think that's something that's been maybe an overload for our staff, and maybe we should consider either having a contractor do our flower beds. Especially if it has a Dayton marker. I know there's been some like, well, if it's not ours, we don't do it. Well, if we put a Dayton marker on it, let's we make it look like it's got a good flower bed. And the specific one is down across from Dayton Tavern. There's burned dead grass and then there's spotty grass, and we have a beautiful updated, I think, Dayton marker there. So I'm not throwing shade, ha, 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 on the groundskeepers. I think they have full-time jobs, and I don't know that we've ever dedicated, but maybe we need contract staff just for the summer that would take care of our bids. The other thing was brought to my attention, and this is one thing that I will tell you when I, when it comes to meeting somewhere else, I will let you know. So the idea was floated around to me that we have the town should buy the property at Sadie Rose, it's for sale, and fix that intersection right there. Because it does cause a lot of cluster with people trying to come across, and they're turning right there at Crem Rose. And same Sadie Rose is for sale, I have no idea, but somebody said, you know, the town is looking for ways to improve, that might be an opportunity. I don't even know what it would cost, or if the dot would even let us straighten up that little intersection, but that property is for sale. And then lastly, again, being positive and moving forward, please reinstate Councilwoman Estes. She's a great asset to the town, and we work with her on our ideas, and so I always ask that you take her. Thank you.
If the budget passes as threatened, there will be a person to vote.
That's what, yeah. Yep.
I didn't want to.
Yeah, no, we heard it. Thanks.
Well, um, I listened to everyone. And I, on the wire, the building, the, I'm not sure. I saw a record that was taken. And what I would ask you. So, but it was a vast divorce, we asked for that, whatever.
Last year, we started meeting with Maggie and Bradford, and Cheryl, you were there at several meetings, and you asked that question then too. And so I offered for free to help anybody in the town with whatever they needed. And who trusts that person? I asked Bob that when I met with you. Would you trust me if I came and said, I'm going to work for you for free? And you said, hmm, I'm a little bit like, probably not. You laughed. And so when I, when Jim's driving was open, if he ever needed anything, fries, burgers, I didn't like the shake machine, I would help him. And when he died, I felt like the merchants were coming out of COVID and I could help them. For instance, we had those meetings where people wanted to learn about Google. Recently, I was up at the market and Zola said, Deb, I need some ideas for my twentieth anniversary. So I wrote up like four different things, how she could do it, probably wouldn't cost her anything, took that up there. Tara, Mike, Jeannie are very active in wanting to do some things. So, and Susie, and Susie, I was going to say, came in recently. And so they just said, we just need help. So if you came to me and said, and I think I offered last year, if you needed help with the two hundred, to let us know. I didn't hear anything, and I saw the postings and everything, didn't see an opportunity that we needed to help you. So I figured you had that taken care of. It's whoever in the town. I buy supplies, and I did ask the town to print the flyer at this time. There was fifteen of them, and they did do that. But last year, I probably spent five hundred dollars on this town to do things for it. And it was a great year, and I'd gladly do it again because I've lived here a long time. I love Dayton, and I will continue to love Dayton, and so I hope that helps answer your question. But does it make a difference, Cheryl? I got five minutes to speak. I got five minutes to speak. I don't think you want to go there. I just think I have to do it.
All right, we'll move on to staff reports, start with Mr. Holt.
Anyway, there's a share now. We don't need this. And access to a process. And so we need to, to forward to close that. And that's what we're saying, correction.
The process of closing and disclosing an interesting real estate supplier to public view, which, when the town is the initiator, it's going to require us to put an ad paper, a little bit of. And we want to make sure that before we forward, that it's something that there's. You know, maybe a majority of council is at least in favor of us advertising to public, so we're, we're here before you tonight, not asking you to close the alley. We're just asking for you to advertise.
All in favor of moving forward with that? Okay.
There's your consent, it's not good, okay.
Uh, I'm a meeting, I want it, I have. There are negative votes. So, I don't know, she's been up long, she's been waiting for like an hour. Uh, essentially, it's all. So, addition to the rate interest. We're trying to commit a call, we want to process. That's good story, so probably good today. That's something. So, just mentioning that to you, it's a work model. And, in fact, she was, uh, part of. They're working on the budget, we know that, but they got like a workshop, they don't leave. Uh, we have a public hearing coming up. Something we, and there are no reports to change this. So we are new to the day, we're off tomorrow. And frankly, I heard you were present, you were one of the law. Well, I think. Actually, I have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Council, Mr. Holden asked me to speak on the two grants I'm currently working on. First one is an ARPA grant. The state had a surplus of ARPA funding. Those just sitting there, the new governor decided to send it out to law enforcement. Patrol, jails, corrections, common law attorney's offices. So we, I wrote that today, actually. We were, we will be awarded fifty-two thousand dollars, zero match, for equipment to help with crime suppression. So that will be submitted tomorrow, once I double check my, so check it twice in the month. The next one that came out was from the cops office from the U.S. Department of Justice. It's the twenty twenty-three Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act program, programs to improve mental health within the law enforcement community. There is, from my notes, nine point. Nine point five million dollars available. The grants, nothing above two hundred thousand dollars, so two hundred thousand dollars or less will be awarded if you get the grant. So I am working on that one as well. That one also has zero match, so it's wash for the town, doesn't cost the town any money. And we currently, I had an officer price out new gym equipment. So we're going to upgrade the gym, that equipment's close to twenty years old, so that's what we're doing with that fund. So if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you, great time. Yeah, so the annual report, once I have it printed for council, I create a PDF and we put it on the police department's website. So there'll be a link under there for annual reports, and we have, I started it in two thousand nineteen because of COVID, I merged nineteen and twenty together. So there is three on there, nineteen and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So, and that link will be up by the end of the week.
Maggie usually puts that on social media as well.
Yeah.
We all know that, that this program is through today. And so it's up here, twenty of five, we put out. And the only thing we need to help with is some of the actions. Is, given the favor of suspicion by any contract related to being drawn.
So moved.
That takes care of that.
Just a thank you for everyone who's worked on it and been patient.
All right, yes. Ms. Pennell.
Aye.
Mr. Seward.
Aye.
Ms. Mathias.
Aye.
Ms. Estes. Mr. DiJack.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Down the other table, I have no report, would like to hear. Now we'll move on to committee reports. We'll start with Mr. DiJack, for example.
All right, looks like we're having way funny times, finally, all right. No, thanks for that, and thank you both to Cheryl and Deb for speaking, and I would just say, I know we've got a lot of exciting activities coming up here. And we've got a great, great economic development force here in town, so with our businesses and our merchants, and I think it's, it's exciting to see, you know, we've got the business spotlight. It's a full force, it's, congratulations to Susie at Main Street Salon and her team for being our inaugural Main Street Salon business highlight. And I know Silver Lake Mill is next, and then we've got Babe Reeper to Mole Hill Bike, so stay tuned, this is the new initiative. We'll be doing about one to two every month, highlighting businesses in town, I think it's, it's great, we get a lot of positive, positive spotlight. To that end, we're also, we look a little more globally here, our, the Shindo Valley Best is out, and I know Maggie put out a posting, so I'll just take the opportunity, since everyone's here, just. The Harrisburg Radio Group is promoting the Shindo Valley Best, we have a number of businesses in multiple categories that are up for, for selection, so they've been nominated, so now it's the time to vote through the twenty-fourth. So go to vote, let's see, it's vote sbbest.com. Again, vote sbbest.com, it's on our town Facebook page too, so please get out and support our local shops and restaurants and contractors, and make it, make Dayton, put Dayton on the map, so. And to that end, we've also got the. And to that end, we've also got the, coming up here, we've got, of course, the artist event is on the 24th as well, so that's straight. And then the market is having the drag day on the 25th, on Saturday. So that's, again, exciting, and congratulations to Zola's for the 20th anniversary. And there you go, again, that's a lot and a little. And then, don't forget, Red Bud next week, or next month. One month away.
Exactly.
So, but I guess I'll be covered under parts of the road. Apparently, we had a budget work session, so. Just note, again, thanks to the staff for really pushing that through, and Susan for coordinating, Krista for getting that coordinated with Plan Commission, too, on the CIP. So for everyone who's interested, we'll have the budget public hearing in April, and we'll get, while mentioning, a lot of the information on what that'll entail, the capital improvement project plan, which is a five-year plan that kind of prioritizes all of our big-ticket projects. That will be reviewed by the Plan Commission on Thursday at 6:00, and then recommendations to council. So again, that's your chance to, you know, all these wonderful projects that you hear about or that we talked about, the comprehensive plan. Well, we'll put them into prioritization, start allocating them, so there you go. That's it.
Thanks, sir. So we're we're reading, who's that? I haven't been talking to anybody quite. Mr. Holden's not here to see me for parts, correct? By the way, I was talking about the wrap out meeting, so break. As we discussed, be here to get brought here, we'll be able to have the diversity. Do that, hopefully, that will and Mr. Faias, firm first up.
So we did need, we just worked through some budget items.
What are the items that you talked about as part of that budget? We continue to move forward with town manager, we'll be doing interviews in the next 15 days. Short period of time longer. Any other counsel comment? Right, we have no one to discuss, we have been we do have a closed session this evening, need a motion to convene a closed session. For the video code section 2.2, 3.1.81, for discussing consideration of our interviews of prospective candidates, performance, time, and public authorities or employees of the town, stuff that matters for next economic development authority.
So moved.
Second.
Faias, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All voted. I have it, this will be With respect to the just concluded closed session, in the best of each member's knowledge, only general business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion by which the closed meeting would convene, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the council. Could I have a roll call, please, in the top?
Can I get a motion on that?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah, so moved, so moved.
Thank you.
And then a second?
There we go.
And Mr. Sewer. Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Ms. Estes. Mr. Dyjack.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have it, being adjourned. For those of you that would like to come sign.